Wait, they did it this time.
I'll live this morning.
I can't take forever without. Let's close on Sundays.
Maybe that's what he thought. Speaking of uh.
I'm seeing very well.
That's what you could.
It's just very well.
Compared to which part.
No, that's what they're having.
They were a lot hurt by them. Whatever people say, they don't sell face of that.
To any. I'm a lower land change. And you went with the place. It's so damn good. You did go every. Tell this. Marry. Go and stop thinking. You know what's bad then?
I think over.
You need advice, you go to the expert.
You're working a part time.
Yeah, just a, just a port. Monday, depending on when it comes in, that's when they get their duty through.
So, thanks so much.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
So normally, I should be. Should make somebody get on the cartridge. And I'd let them put up the star.
How you doing, business?
Oh, it's great. There's what I love in Hollywood.
That seems to be doing okay too, but I feel like they're a little mismanaged.
Who's in?
Those, those.
Yeah, it's kind of.
I'm gonna take a good job now, I'm telling you. He's owning that whole middle building on the way. But just like him and stuff. Someone's upset that this organizer.
High school, and the summer's best. They're closed, they're closed. Yes, it's uh.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock. We're four o'clock. Usually at the five or something. Yeah, but he's just got. I'm sure I'm not fun too, so.
That's why they're just closing.
I bet they, I bet with spring and summer coming on, they have. The hairs and.
I tell you what else I've done. They did everything on their son and tops, so. They were calling for ice and snow. I ain't there much. I never said that. I'm gonna go there. Land boy, that's a black line. What about elevator cars?
I think they're really, I'm saying, I have these house projects going on, which is.
Yeah, C T Wilson, they're trying down that building. They come like.
It was all times eleven, so I think the hand say it was ten minutes past.
Yeah, true.
Uh, C T Wilson is doing the dead on.
Okay. Like a rogue stool.
Are they getting a service email? Side doors that are adjacent to it.
Like those little chicken knees for the access.
Grab those. So. It's cool to see that all door.
Chicken that gets in their purr, man.
They're not possible.
You know. Yeah, yeah.
That's so hard to hear, it's the scar on these.
Talking about students, that's so. It was. You know what that already says? That was the first man to discourage. Cause you're like. That's what I mean, I mean, he's had.
No kidding, yeah. That, that was a church, it's a corner building. Yeah, it was a church.
There.
I can play this in a long hole. I'm like, it was the um, the property. So that the church has a yard, you know, they have. That was a whole church. That's why it's there now, yeah.
That's just there for me and her. And sister girl. Said all the same, we'd like to get a bird. He would not turn. Three cup holes.
Four cup holes?
Do you know anybody who do that now that? I'm serious.
No, real quick, I do things to count, right? That's the count of childhood. My God.
We are now officially committing to honor Commissioner Austin and give a standing here with the more information.
Thank you for this day, Lord.
Yes.
Thank you for this meeting, Lord Jesus, that's what we say, Lord Jesus, yes, stand, Lord Jesus. I'm the best everyone in the meeting. And that's what's on my, personally, my prayer.
And that. Let's all join together with the pledge of allegiance.
I have a pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. Lamentation under ground and with all. The people who are being justice for all.
Commissioner Houser, if you will read, uh, read us in our vision statement.
You know, I'll read off this. Sure. But he's got a. Invent a framework for the success and balance governance, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
Commissioner Boone, if you will read our vision statement.
Silver City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
Thank you, ma'am. Now on to new businesses. Are any changes in our new business?
I'd like to uh. Make a motion to. My partner Jim, I'd like to remove uh. Item two point two, please.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. That item two point two be removed from this agenda, all in favor, it'll be designated by sign of ah. All opposed, have the same right?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second that the agenda be approved as modified. All in favors. Go by sign of ah. All of those have the same right. All right. Item two point one, uh. Mister Jackson, you're up.
All right. Thanks for having me back.
Yes, sir.
Can I feel here, so everybody can see you? I can see you.
Well, sure, you all too.
Let's do this. You'll be at eye level, okay? So, um, while Kim's loading a PowerPoint. Uh, I'll just ask you, um, how do you think, uh, the work session went on Monday?
Yeah, I enjoyed it. I think we learned some things. Got some things straight, and I think we have our direction.
Well, that and everybody's down on the same page with what their dogs are.
Yeah, I think new members are pretty much aligned, weren't they?
Yeah.
Even. Different words, different expression for even strengths and weaknesses became out. A lot of the same sense of. Urgency and perspective. So, um. What I, what I like to do, uh. While she's loading the PowerPoint, um.
I'm gonna try to run that from your computer real quick.
Okay, sounds good.
Sorry about that, y'all.
It is good. Get your thoughts on. What we might accomplish tonight. Um, I think. You made a lot of progress from the standpoint of drafting. And I tried to, um. Capture. The word smithing, it's hard to do, you know, in a setting like this, but I try to capture that and we'll uh, go through that. And hopefully we'll uh, be at a point where uh, you can sign off tonight. Uh, basically the body. Of twenty twenty four strategic plan and put it on the agenda. And then invite public comment. Which I highly recommend before you adopt it. But uh. Finalize, if we can, tonight, the wording of the priorities and the goals. So we'll go through that. I'm sure that you're comfortable with that. Us discuss whatever you need to do. But on the rest, I'm just trying to capture, um, like you said, your, your agreement. This will be what consensus of what you agree upon, if I, I captured it right, I took a lot of notes. I'm ready to take more notes tonight if I need to. And then the other piece is to give you the benefit of my intuition, and that's all it is. Uh, intuition on the kinds of resource issues you're gonna get into. Okay? That's, that's not with. Not with the town manager. Although I did receive uh, some input from department directors about the kinds of performance measures and what their action items would be. If that's down another level. From, you know, strategic priorities are themes, right? And then the goals and objectives are four to five things you're gonna do to move in that direction. At least over the next year until you revisit it again in the following, okay? Um, in, in the next process. Just to go over this again, um, is get the. Uh, I'll get your comments tonight and work it up. The, this is the body. We won't put it in a bow and wrap it up and publish it because you're not, you're not done until you adopt it. And in a public meeting, right? Um, and then, um, there'll be some follow up. Uh, after you do adopt it, then it's building those performance measures that go with the goals. And that's, you made progress, I think there was consensus uh, on what the performance evaluation form for the town manager should be.
Yes.
And that you would build those five goals in. To, with, with those expectations, so you can't complete that process until. You, you will firm up what the, the goals are gonna be. And get some input on what's measured. Right? Now, so the insurance. When you, um. Go to your next budget work session. You can thoughtfully consider, you know, what you need to invest in order to move things forward. And then you can stay on board with quarterly reviews of your priorities and goals. So that. When you get to the end of the year, there shouldn't be any surprise about where, where you're landing. And you'll come at it, I think, much more fully informed and. In control than you have been this past year. So that's, that's what I'm hoping to contribute, I hope we come out of here tonight with, um, you know, giving you. Uh, nailing down the draft of priorities and the goals. And uh, giving you a sense of the potential impacts and considerations that will go in. To, uh, and that's really just prep work. If I, I play myself in your shoes and saying, oh, we're gonna have a budget work session, I need to be looking for. These kinds of. Investments. To back up my goals. And you wanna be able to see those and have a sense of those before you get the department submissions, which I think is. Was very well laid out Cindy, that, that's something that you've benefited from having in the past, but you wanna get. This, nail those strategic priorities down, you wanna see what departments can contribute to that. And also what they need to move their vision for that department forward, but not independent. You follow me? What I would do is, uh, what I'd, but of course, make it possible for the department director to come in and say. Here's how I think I'm progressing on the, the long range plan for the park department. Here's, here's, if, if I could get adjustments to base, which can be operating. Could be capital as well, right? But, yeah, here's, here's what, if, if you have, if we have the means this year, I know I'm competing against, or you have to evaluate what I'm asking for. Compared to what place is asking for, what public works is asking for. Not utilities, cause that's another one, so that's, that's, those are different parts, they don't compete with general opportunities, but. Um, hopefully, uh, you come out of here today, uh, tonight, uh, prepare to ask informed questions. Like. I expect to see certain things when those department records come in, right? So, um, you're not gonna be hitting hold with requests, uh, and they're not gonna come in here without. Instructions, expectations, right?
Sure.
So it should be a more meaningful and beneficial interaction for you all. When it does, when it does get scared. And, and has that, a date been determined where we're gonna come back with that? Next week?
Pick that tonight, I'm hoping probably a couple weeks we'll come back.
All right, so, um, we got a PowerPoint up. I'm gonna have to confess, there, there's a. I got a contribution from an A I. And uh, now, and I'll let you guess which, which slide I got it captured. Uh, next slide, please, um. Here's what I'm gonna cover. I'm gonna cover the challenges with change management. Like I said before, we're gonna go over, um, consensus from, um, Monday. And then I'm gonna cover those possible fiscal impacts. Um. And take it from there. Get your direction for when you want this brought back with the budget, okay? Next slide. So, a lot of people do strategic planning, public sector, private sector, nonprofit sector. What do you think the rea? Why do you think there's mixed success achieving their visions? And I, I can tell you, there actually are, I didn't use chat G B T for this, but there are a lot of studies out there of. Private sector organizations that fail to meet their strategic goals. And that could be profitability, market share, uh, et cetera, et cetera, return on equity and those kind of things that they set goals for. So what, why do you think, um, there's such mixed results with strategic plan implementation? So one city or one town might be more successful than the other?
The, as we mentioned on Monday, talking about the reviews. Because if we don't. Review what, where we are and where we're wanting to go on. On a, on a, well, we've talked about quarterly basis, if we're not doing that, then we don't know where we're going.
Measurement. They're, they're only gonna measure, it's important, that's, you're absolutely right. What else comes into play?
Everybody understanding what the goals are and what the strategic plan is saying.
Is the vision understood?
Yeah.
And communicated, right?
Having reasonable goals.
Achievable. Achievable goals. Uh, that's the action plan, so you have to have an action plan, you can't just have a vision, right? Anything else come to mind that you might think of?
The second question, I would say cohesion of the board and mayor. Necessary ingredients.
That's right. Cohesion. Is their leadership. And there's their delegation, proper assignment. You know, you set a policy direction, a vision. And going to the next. Delegating, right? And only people count. Another, one other thing before we do the next slide, which is the chat G B T slide. What else, what else might be critical to. Success in strategic planning?
Having the right people in the right position and working together.
Working together, right people, right? Okay? We can come back to that, um. But first, I'm always, I'm gonna share this, this next slide with you, which is, I asked, I mean, chat G B T, you know, um. What are, what are some insights that I could share? With a municipal body about, um, strategic planning? So can you scroll that up, Kim, please? So three. Uh, down, please. Sorry to be such a pain.
No, you're not a thing.
Uh, in case you can't see, uh, the first one's from Benjamin Franklin. By failing to prepare, you are preparing to fail. And then the next one is from Winston Churchill, however, and this is like in his language. However beautiful the strategy, you should occasionally look at the results. Um, I'm gonna come back with Winston Churchill, I meant with my favorite quote. But, and the next one is from Peter Drucker, anybody know who Peter Drucker is? The father of modern, when I was in business school fifty years ago. You could, every class had a Peter Drucker tent. He's that, he's that accomplished at it. Uh, and his quote here is unless commitment is made, there are only promises and hopes, but no plans.
Yeah.
You all summed this up. Sitting around the table, you didn't need me, need me to tell you that. My favorite Winston Churchill quote, which I have to share. Is, uh, this goes back to. World War Two times. And I quote is, you can always count on Americans to do the right thing. When all else fails. And he's right about that. We relate to the, late to the game, in both arenas, Pacific and dynamic. So let's go to the next slide, if we could. Um, this is gonna be hard for you to see, but this is the answer. In scientific terms to what you have to have in place to manage complex change, which is set a vision for the community achieving it twenty years from now. You know, if you have. Vision, skills. Incentives, resources, and action plans. You can produce the change. What happens if you don't have? Action plans? What's it say?
Spinning in place.
Treadmill, that's a treadmill, standing in place, that's exactly right. So what happens if you don't have, uh, adequate resources?
Get upset, frustration.
That's right, you're gonna be real frustrated if you set these goals and you, and you. Missed the mark in terms of, uh, resourcing it. Um. Then you see the, the incentives, and what we're talking about is, uh, those can be. Tied to the measures as well. You know, what, what's, what's in it? For your management team, what's in it for the organization to accomplish these things? And, and there've got to be ways to, uh, through mail reviews, through performance evaluations, through promotional opportunities for people who. Doing this work well for you, uh, need to be rewarded for. Uh, in some cases, some organizations I've worked with, uh, we actually established the gain sharing. And we established, uh. Uh, rewards for, uh. Employee suggestions. That led to implementation, process improvement, uh, savings in the budget, uh, better customer service. And you can, if you establish that upfront, the pool upfront, you can take nominees and then, and, and do that as outside of the merit review, uh, process. Um. And then, of course, um. What happens if you don't have the skills?
Nobody doesn't lighten on what they're not doing.
Right.
That makes you feel anxious.
So. Keep this in mind, I mean, because all those things really need to be in place for, for. You're, you're gonna come up short. But. Just like there are, um, documented examples of where a number of these things were not in place, or, uh, when they've examined. Postscript, failure of the organization. You can pin it on, on one of those. Five things not being in place. Um. And this is, this is the common model, it's been around since the nineteen nineties. But it, it's the truth. Okay, next slide. So we're gonna recap the consensus from Monday. Um. And as I said, then get into the potential fiscal challenges. Next slide. By now, y'all know the difference between a priority and a goal, right? Okay, next slide. So, my notes from. Facilitate, it's different words, see? Uh, facilitate and achieve economic prosperity, is that where we landed?
Yes, sir.
And then, so I think you have this in hard copy, don't you?
I don't got it yet.
Um, thank you. This'll be easier for you to see the slide. Then we won't have to send the PowerPoint out to you later.
Just print them, we still want.
I have one.
So, running to. And what I was like, I took the numbers, this is priority A. Which instead of numbering them. Subtle change, but I hope you appreciate that, okay? So, um. Each one of these goals. Have been. We tempered with. I just want you to take a moment to look at those, if you have any questions, let me know. Anybody have any questions about, yeah, I thought I was gonna say this, or I thought, um. I'll tell you, I have a little trouble with the last one. Um. Because I, I think some folks maybe looked at me funny when I said investment incentives. Because there, there are different words, definitions of incentives, a lot of times where you think about economic development, you think of actually giving them a tax break. That's what, what, what I was thinking about with supporting local business, it's, uh, giving them investments, incentives, like fixing the sidewalks in front of their business. Replacing the, the downtown, uh, location directional signage. Uh, doing some, you know, streetscape improvements, now, in some cases, like when I worked in the military reserve, we made, uh, created a pool for facade improvements. If somebody wanted to update their, their facade. And we actually, actually had an architectural stance. You know, we were allowed to just put a living of facade, uh, but it, we needed to show some of this original historical character of liberty, liberty reserve. Um, we made thirty percent grants of it, so that's, I, I'm just thinking ahead, you know? But the, those are the kinds of incentives I'm talking about. Um, investment, it's an investment incentive for the private sector if you are having a lot of promotional events. If all the programs and events, um, bring people downtown. So, that's. That's what I tried to capture there, um. Are there any, again, you, you'll have an opportunity to, to rejuice. And then, uh, discuss and vote on. Cause you'll be adopting, so if, we don't wanna have to. Wordsmith it again tonight, but, um, if anything sticks out at you, you flag it for. Now, we're gonna drop down, um. The slot, next slide and talk about resources. Is there some possible fiscal impacts? You got it. That's it, it's the same, it's the same, uh, priority, but these are just in my mind. That's it, it's the same, it's the same, uh, priority, but these are just in my mind anticipating. What might come into play as you get into your budget work session, you talk about. Well, Hank, where do we need to invest to make sure we? Facilitate and achieve the economic prosperity we want to. Okay? And so the kinds of things that I would expect to see, I would imagine we would be planning to bring to you. Would be, uh, most capital improvements for investment downtown. Yeah, what, what are we doing, what, how are we spending public money to attract private investment down? And that's not to get into what those specific improvements would be, whether it's. Your program, whether it's, you know, doing landscaping or those kind of things, it's just saying. If you're gonna move private investment, if you're gonna attract more local. Uh, businesses downtown, if you wanna see them, retain them, and you want them to expand. And there may be some partners to work with. You know, but, and you have, you have a commit, an advisory committee too, don't you? That advisory committee?
Yeah.
Their input would be very valuable too. Uh, uh, for that very same thing. Speaking of that, in addition to hearing from the department heads, occasionally. Uh, there were key areas where we invited, uh, in other towns I worked in. Invited the chair, the advisors, they're coming with saying, you know, please. Make a plan at their next meeting to think about where we need to go. Typically, if it's that you have a downtown advisory board.
Oh, that's true.
Right, that makes sense.
So currently, each advisory board does a presentation in December. Okay. To make an annual recommendation for what they talk about throughout the year.
Okay. So you're ahead of the game there. Housing development was, is in that, in your goal statement? And I don't know. Uh, you know, a lot of different programs. And a lot of studies going on these days about the full range of, I call it lifecycle housing. But a full house, but lifecycle house. Uh, in a community. And I just don't know where you have been with that. Uh, I do know that you're updating your land use plan. So you're gonna get some. Additional, um. Benchmarking, you know, what other communities are doing in terms of promoting or managing residential growth. But if you have. You have specific things you're trying to accomplish with housing development. Uh, if you don't. Uh, have a plan to implement, this would be something, there are a lot of resources available to you to establish a plan. Uh, but you. I don't know where you're starting from. But if you're not gonna accomplish anything with housing without committing time and effort to it. Um. Same with workforce development, my experience as if you've been working in municipalities was that generally workforce development was a county function. Uh, but, uh, much like we talked about on Monday, uh, collaborating with. School, the school districts, collaborating with the county of workforce development, and what you need or what you see need, or at least just having, uh, you know. An interaction with them so that you're, you're, um. Collaborating. Okay, I don't know that you're collaborating. I don't know that you're having those discussions with counties or with, uh, the county of the province, but. This is not the center of specific action plans, but it suggests that. Think about what you're gonna put in. Okay? Um, and then finally, you have the, the Chatham County Transportation Plan. So. These, uh, this is not intended to be, you know, vote up or, or down, it's just to give you a heads up. Any, any questions about? Why I put what I did down there, I was trying to explain. There was more, there was more brainstorming with myself, so I, I know I left some things out, but hopefully that generates the kinds of. Considerations you wanna make. Next one, please. This is where we get into, um. Think the last word, I don't know if that's the same as it was before, plan and implement sustainable infrastructure, I think that's stayed the same. The, uh, the goals, um. I can't remember who said it, but, you know, make sure we complete all phases of the consent order was one thing that. Turned out on the table Monday night. Obviously, working in partnership with the city of Stanford, um. Um, there, you got an update, uh, on Monday about doing a pavement condition survey. And so I think that's a goal you wanna have up here, including taking it to the next level, which is having a plan. You see, the way those, you know the way those work? Uh, in, in it for. Working for work, uh, next to large communities, they go out and do this with infrared machines that evaluate the roads. And they capture this and they'll tell you what the condition of every road is in each section. And it's all digitized and automated. And then what it will tell you is the condition of. Every linear foot. Of roadway you have in town. And then, um. If, if there's top show, they will also give you estimations of what's in. It's a worst grade. Fair grade. An okay grade. And meets or exceeds expectations. And if you are like most communities and every community that I worked in, first time you do it. So you have more down here that needs attention than you realize. But they can tell you, if you wanna move. Everything up to. A certain level. What you need to spend. Or how many linear miles of work you need to do, so you will be a lot out there. Attention, I imagine that the, the firm that's doing it is well experienced in doing, or you wouldn't have selected it, so.
We didn't. We didn't know about it until after it was done. So we didn't select them, so we don't know what type of firm they are, since you've mentioned that, I thought I would let you know that the board doesn't.
The, the, the contract wasn't done with the board's approval?
It was in the budget. It was approved in the budget.
Okay, so you, you didn't, you don't have to bring contracts back? For items that are, that are strategic.
What, what?
Right. Next time, it might be best to, to keep everybody in the loop. Next, uh, so going down to the fiscal impact. Yeah, you'll have some, when you get it. It's a highly, those payment studies are highly technical in the way they work at, but you know, it gets to the fundamental policy question. That you need to ask, which is. If we're doing a five-year plan. What's reasonable for, back to the comment about reasonable goals, what can you reasonably accomplish, and then what's it gonna cost to do that? And if you don't have that information. Now, that you could factor it into the budget planning, you're, you're probably gonna have to do some kind of placement. Right? Cause otherwise you're doing a mid-year budget amendment when. You bring the, bring the, the report on the paper, right? Back to the, if you don't measure, you don't push the. Resources into it, you're not gonna achieve it. I mean, it's, so strategic planning is a double-edged sword. It, it, it puts a real pressure on leadership to produce. I, I gotta admit. So then, um, in terms of fiscal impact. We're pretty much into this, um, Kim, if you could scroll down. The good news is you're, you're fairly well along, uh, in terms of your infrastructure planning and implementation. I think we did our job, we did this job, we did some, some bid documents for the wastewater treatment plant in today, um, so. Those are moving, moving forward. I don't think anybody knows at this point, um, what the. Fiscal impact on the merger would be, but you can count on it costing money. Uh, if I'm gonna take over your utility system. Like, back to the roads, if I were gonna take over your roads. I'd wanna know what your asset inventory tells me. And if I'm. Taking on. An additional burden. And actually rates, are the rates sufficient to cover what's built into that? But, you know, you've got, we'll tie in, and you connect. Uh, you know, there are valves and there are controls and, um. There may be forced mains and, and pressure pumps and a whole variety of things. Uh, line sizing and connections that need to be reworked. And maybe in some cases lines relocated to make them work. Because the system has to be. Redundant. I mean, it's gotta be a legal system.
You're right.
It can't just come out here and. Right? So, uh, that's, um, something I would be concerned about, and it's just to get some info, estimates in your budget work session process, what's, what's it gonna take to, to get us through the city of. To, to reach agreement with the city of Stanford.
Well, see, that's the other issue, nobody on the board has been able to even talk with the people that are making the decisions. So we have no clue. Of how this is being done.
Yeah.
And until. Uh, somebody from the board actually attends these meetings. Then that person, our, our community has no clue.
Well, see, the, the negotiations. Are different than getting your policy direction.
Right.
Getting your policy direction is absolutely imperative. What, what are we trying to accomplish, why are we going after this, that's a policy, that's a work session discussion much like this, start. And, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't go to meeting with them. Without knowing what you're trying to accomplish.
Right.
So the answer isn't putting yourself into the negotiations, it's providing policy direction for your negotiator. Right? So it sounds like, it sounds like you need to have, um. A strategic discussion. About. Why we're headed in that direction, what its pros and cons are, if we pursue it, what would you have staff, uh, pursue? Um, and it's mainly, it may need to be in closed session, so the advice that you provide. To your manager and, and attorney, because it will be in agreement, right? It's, it's whatever, there's, that's where the, the strategy making, should, should take place. The going and doing the meeting and sitting across the table from somebody from Sanford. Uh, and you can't, you can't all go do that.
No, we can't, and I, we understand that, but I have talked with others that have entered this agreement. And a couple of members from the board were allowed to sit in, all that agreement, and I can give some input. On where this would be going, how it's going to affect the citizens of Sola City. And we have yet to get to that point. That's all I'm saying about that particular piece is that all of us sitting around this table have an investment. And our investment is the citizens who put us in.
Well, it's especially incumbent, um. Upon the, the community to involve, um, the mayor. I had, um, the opportunity in Asheville to negotiate. Several of legal disputes with Buncombe County and Henderson County. So the mayor and I went and met with the chair and the county manager, and, and talked about what we were trying to accomplish. And, and what the, what the purpose of it is. Uh, so having leadership discussions.
Yes.
And, and bringing the, the chair of the board, the, the chair of the commission, um, into those discussions. And establishing expectations, that's what leaders do. Uh, but getting into the, the. Uh, you don't really be doing the negotiations, I'm not sure, the manager really doesn't really appreciate doing the negotiations, but being involved. Setting direction around this table, what you're trying to accomplish, what parameters you want your negot, your negotiator to, to take to the table, what you're willing to accept. Right? Is, is important, because you don't wanna waste the time to bring something in us, out of our expectations. And having leader-to-leader conversations. You know, um, through the process, the mayor and I would go to meet with the Henderson County, uh, chair and manager. Once upon, see how it's going. And that would keep it on track.
Right.
So that's, there is a way to, um, one. Get policy direction, two, keep leadership informed. And yet allow the. The details, the legal details to get worked out, uh, across the table. Oh, let's see, so then, um. All phases of the consent. I don't know where, uh, the dollars stand, but you're gonna wanna know where the dollars stand. Um, when you set the budget. And find officer Cameron, right? And we talked about the pavement survey. It's gonna, it, it should drive some adjustment. If it's, it's worth it. Next slide is the, um. You reworded that to be strengthen organization and operational performance. And took excellence out of there, and we put strength in.
Right.
Take a look at those and see if we, if I captured your thoughts, um, somewhat reworded those goals. But a lot of those carried over, so I don't, I, I, I don't recall making any significant changes to the goals under this. But if I did. Is there any concern about it, please let me know now. Alright, so let's talk about what, what it's gonna take to move the need parts. Next slide down, Kim. And I had a lot of thoughts on this, um, having been through. At every job I was hired in, I was brought in to change the culture. Every job I came in. And, and all the stuff you've heard about doing strategic planning, building performance-based budgeting, intergovernmental relations and partnerships and collaboration. All those things were driven by necessity for me. And so, uh. I found a lot of these things were necessary, and you gotta pay, you gotta pay a competitive wage, and you've done a survey, so it's gonna be on the table for you now, how much you can do. Beyond cost of living or to do merits, uh, or do some of these gain sharing or, or incentives for. Uh, money savings, suggestions, process improvement. How, how do you build those incentives in beyond just basic pay? Is, is, is something to consider. And employers of choice these days, uh, also look at. Their benefit packages, how competitive those are, they're looking at changes in, in the way people, people need to take family leave. And so this is something else that you might, you know, this can be expanded beyond. Cost of living and salary adjustments to the, the comprehensive package, because sometimes in cases. More favorable family leave or, um, different variable work schedules for people who are not on, doing shift work and stuff like that. Um, there, there are things that attract and retain people beyond just pay these days. And, and some of it, we address further down here, and that's invest in training necessary, skill development and innovation. And above that, um. I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna tell you that. These days, um, making significant process improvement is dependent upon having the right tools. It really depends upon, I mean, you talked about, uh, I'll give you an example, um. Service, service request tracking. How many do you get a day? Where do they come from? Who knows? Who's taking down the order? And then sending it to the right person, or does, or people love to make random phone calls? There are, there are models, there are systems, there, you can get. Software packages for service tracking for a citizen's call-in. Or you can, um, establish one simply for the board. But you need to have some kind of way, put it on a spreadsheet. What, what was, what, what's the date, what was sent in, we sent it in, what's the nature of the request, how, what's the disposition? And then, last column is closure, right? And do you get anything like that? Would you benefit?
We don't have any systems like that.
Okay, so that's what I'm talking about, investing is goals and systems necessary to be, to be productive. And what goes into the more mundane things, like. How old are your police cars? And uh people out in the field, you send them out to do inspections, do they have a laptop which has the permits and everything there? It's like you're getting out of the utility business, but you know, big movement was to um automate meter reading, things like that. I mean, these are investments which you make. If if you go a long way to metering. You can have, you can lead anywhere from one third to one tenth the amount of meter readers you want to have. That kind of thing. And so. Every line of business these days, including the people's tristness, is highly automated. We need the technology to perform, people need, say they got laptops, they need to have monitors if they're doing plan review. Or engineering, or any of that kind of stuff, uh financial um. Budgeting tools, we go to performance budgeting, keep track of the return on your investments, performance measures and those kind of things. Again, these are. If you don't have them, other places do. And the the beauty about the public sector is it's not proprietary. You can get it, you can figure out. Who has, who had, who really needed the city? Has software. A bracket service request, who has uh scheduling for parks and recreation that can be done online. In Asheville, we went to, um I went there to automate uh plan submissions and informing. And people were having to go for permits, they would go to this building, for millions, they would go to that building. And fill out different forms, and they drop off plans and hard copy. I can tell you now, ninety five percent of plans and permits are processed in Asheville electronically, digitally. It it takes more people or less people to run a system like that. Either it's free to get the software and the tracking systems in place. Maybe people need a training, and some people rise up to the requirements to do the work, and some people don't. Um but but you give them the opportunity, you give them the training, you don't buy a uh services software. Uh package without bringing people on.
Correct.
Once the, I noticed from the chiefs um. Everyone, like I said, everybody did, they're ahead of the game, they're starting to address what they would have to do their job. Anywhere crime mapping, and there are other types of tools that are available. Again, it's like the service quests, where where have we been responding, what have we been responding to, what dates, what time of day? You know, and so you you come up with solutions based upon your understanding of the problem. But that's intel, right? And so this is where you're gonna um uh find the opportunities to make employees more productive. To get more from from the employees and get more out of the employees for your benefit. But this is understanding from them, what's I need to perform my job. And the manager asking, as well as you all echoing, which is like, where do we go from here? What is the next level of performance? What's what's happening in other communities? Uh yeah, you found the payment conditions or the that tools around forty years. Right? Yeah, just like asset inventory and assessment for utilities, these are not new tools. Um one of our. This is, this is not a small town. It's coming your way. And the expectations that the E Q is putting on you for for water utilities. And and the the pressure that's put being put on you by developers about plan review and submissions and how that gets processed. You're catching up with the update of the comprehensive plan, and then you'll wanna update your uniform development ones. You follow me? These are, these are system improvements, they they don't come cheap, but you know, the problem is for for. Those communities that are behind the technological advancement. There's all these people that are coming here, start a business or do a development. They've been working on these with these tools. And so they're calling in the question, if they have it already, they'll call on the question, not just whether or not somebody returned their call, or how quick am I processing, how it's gonna be processed. But um you know, do we have an opportunity to digitally submit? And can we see a tracking online, just like on your service quest, where is the permit? Where did it go? Are there technical comments? Do I get them back through the software package online, etcetera, etcetera? You follow what I'm saying? Um like I said, I've got a lot of biases about this and had a lot of success. Um but and and we also came up with unique solutions. And you, this is not to tell you what to do, this can get you thinking about this. In Asheville, we came up with, and it wasn't my idea, the I T director said. Why why don't we do a technology fee? For developed. Uh five percent on possible permit that goes into a pool. To create the monitor so you can review the plans that are submitted electronic. And so it's kept separate, but it's a it's a technology fee that's on each and every permit plan. It goes in a pool that only gets used for technology for development review and implementation. It works great, and other places are starting to catch on to that idea. That's just a creative idea that came out of, we gotta invest in this stuff. But if it was a port from the general fund, it's it's for the benefit of the applicant, right?
Right.
So we sold it on that basis, which is, yeah, they'll just complain at first, but then when they came around to, you're gonna see improved results, I guarantee it. And they have, and now ninety five percent of them submitted the plans and permits electronically, they wouldn't have it any other way. And originally they were complaining, which is like, I'm a small architectural firm, or I'm a small engineering firm, I, you can't possibly expect me to do this. I'm like, you don't have to, you can still come in, you put paper on the on the desk, it won't be reviewed in the same time. As a digitally submitted set of plans, we won't be able to give you comments back. We'll have to produce them on paper too, you're slow, you're in process now, so that's just a case in point. You following? So that's, this is where you're headed in terms of organizational performance. And every department in the city knows some performance enhancement that could take place. If they were able to invest in certain tools and certain training. Okay, uh next slide, please. Take a look at this um. I did it twice. It was a busy night last night. So let's go down to D. So enhance community engagement. I've. You kept the same goals, did you not? I think there's more to talk about here in terms of financial planning. Welcome to, welcome to talk. I I thought those goals capture the kind of community engagement you wanna do. Um but let's let's slide on down, Kim, if you would, to uh fiscal impacts. Nope, go back. I'd love to skip one, but here we go, yeah, that one, thanks. So um community engagement, everybody's uh portal these days is their is their uh website. And some things have been added, your website's better in twenty twenty four than it was in twenty twenty two. I can actually attest to that. Uh but people are becoming more and more attex literate, they they wanna see stuff on your website. They wanna see if you have a Facebook page, if you're posting things there about events and activities and things coming their way. Uh but you know, you don't. Again, uh taking it to the next level, having a more robust tool. That requires upgrading the uh menu. And somebody programming it, customizing it for you, so it looks like yours, right? And and capture your identity, uh that's gotten a lot cheaper than it used to. Um and but the the operation and maintenance of community information. Is much more demanding than it used to be. Much more demanding, so who's your webmaster? Who's making sure that um you you had the work session on on Monday? Did somebody summarize that and post it on the webpage? Kim, did you? Is it up there for everybody to see? Have you got any hits?
I don't know about that.
That's the other thing, um you know, it's a two-way communication. So asking for comments and you having the ability to go in and see who's responding. But you know, uh I get so tired of hearing breaking news. But things are happening in this town that people might wanna know about.
Yeah.
Okay, and I mean, different segments of the community, there are different interests and different ways to reach people. Right? Because we're all different. Yes, so where's the dedicated staff resources to to pull all this together? You know, it's, I'm I'm sure that uh Ken and Frank and the department heads, they come together when you wanna uh do that. Uh that mean, I mean, have events and forums. Um and put those out, I mean, did you do it in the year report? You had, you had those advisory groups come in? For their reports and writing, did they, did you put it on the web? But we might might have been associated with the agenda, but people don't read agendas. So who who's your public information officer? Who gets up every morning thinking about? What's happening at? How many, how many hats can she wear? We talk about, you know, uh snap action tracking. We talk about scheduling events, we talk about web mastering. It's it's labor intensive, and you can get there. The city clerk, but she's been, but she's doing it, she's not being the city clerk. Okay, so there there's a limit to how much you can put on one person and it's gonna perform well. And I I think that um. I I know this is the case, I know that Hank's looking at ways to uh change document descriptions and move some of these things around. And where maybe uh some other duties are going away, who could pick up some of this additional work? And this is administrative work, this project management and administrative work. Um and it's it's very labor intensive. You run your own game, and you try to organize events and get out and put materials together, it's it's a long work, isn't it? And so who who is that person? Who was taking the same kind of passion to sell? Siler City to the boat. I mean, this is your success success story, right? You're accomplishing things, do people know it? As well as they shouldn't. It takes, it takes um takes resources. You heard that um there was a need to do uh parks and recreation master planning and update that. Um I think you all probably heard like, like I do, I didn't mention pickleball up here, but everybody wants to be on the bike part of Greenway these days, right? Um you know, so um I don't know when, again, I didn't ask. I don't know when the last time your parks and recreation plan was updated. Um again, that's another community engagement process, that's why it fits well here, because what you do is you go out and ask people, how are we doing it? What do you like, what's our existing system, where does the system need to grow, where the population's growing, do we need another neighborhood park over here? Just like, okay, the neighbors growing over here, there's fire station. It's the same kind of facility and operational plan. Your population's growing, maybe looking at your recreational. And again, that's another thing that, you know, in twelve years in Asheville, we put, we began putting so much stuff. On on the on the internet, on the web, I mean, people would take yoga classes. And they would take, you know, all kinds of uh cooking class. And so we'd ask for these things, and so we would be in rec center, and our would be in rec center, and they'd have a cooking class, they videotaped. We put it out there. And so uh this is where you look at your recreational program and what do people want as opposed to what are you currently offering? And and the benefit of doing that kind of master planning assessment process is is you you become eligible. For state grants, once you have a master plan in place, you can get money to come back in and do that park extension. Once you have, that that's called part. Parks and Recreation Trust. It's you, you have to have the plans in place uh to qualify for those those grants. If you get a ma- have a master plan, then you can apply for a a grant to build, develop, design one of those parks. And once you get the design in place, then you can, you can go through capital budgeting, it's a stair step process. But again, you have to be intentional, or you don't get these. You don't make, you don't make it out of the pack, right? We got a river redevelopment done in Asheville, um it was a decade-long process. Decade-long process, and we got money from everyone. Federal, state, our own funds, we named. Um but it it required having a concerted plan and keeping them all throughout the process and keeping them through the process. And back to your point about, you know, the water agreement. I I had turnover in the board, in in terms of elected representatives, so it was very important to do orientations and bring people up to speed. And and we had a a city county advisory board. And so then it's like, okay, we gotta, I also remember, we're in the world law, so I know what's the bill this time. And so there was always, you you can't accomplish great things if there isn't the inner relationship between leadership, management. And life. And and parks is a great example of where we, if you're gonna make progress, that's, you know what you're doing and have deliberate plan, because they take years. Next slide, the final slide, priority E. Not priority five. Uh and I think that's the same wording, is it, provide a high level of public safety? And. That's those, can we back up? I think those are, those are the goals, those are the, wait a minute, yeah. I I missed the slide. Yeah, those are the. Can we come down to the, yeah, both of the work of the resource requirements. Um maybe go back up, please. So in in terms of public safety, I I can remember what was in there. Um in terms of um, those are fiscal impacts. In terms of the goals, um there was discussion about um. We'll see when I send it out again in writing, there was the addition of the goal to do a master plan for the fire service. And fire fire prevention and suppression, facility and staffing, uh doing some kind of long range, long range plan. So that that I added into the the goals. I think everything pretty much stayed second, that was the the key additions under the public safety. Okay?
And I've written in there, it was mentioned. Eventually moving from volunteer to a.
And so I think that's um. I think Mr. Jackson said, I think this was mislabeled, this is fiscal impact, because.
Yeah.
To move to that, to move to that, that's where the consulting firm goes in, but I thought they had several listed under.
You do, which included the the addition.
Yeah.
There were three carryovers in the addition, there were only three before, there was the three carryovers. The fire set. Okay? So um you all will have the complete list and I'll. A through B priorities to review when when you set up your next meeting. Um so if we go down to the the last slide, we're wrapping up here. So the next steps. Um yeah, schedule board, final draft consideration. And I'll make sure you've got got the updated um goals in there, at the priority statement of goals. Um you would take public comment at that time, and you could judge for yourself whether or not you wanna go in at that night, or you wanna do a second reading. Um, you would take public comment at that time and you could judge for yourself whether or not you want to go in at that night or want to do a second reading. Let's let's see if those comments sync in. Um, and then you would, you would adopt the plan. Um, announce in public side. Again, it's back to the website, you know, if there's three files in the boards, does anybody even hear it? Uh, so putting it out there and then your uh next task is to align those performance man, the manager's performance management plan and. And in in the in between, uh, once, once you you adopt the plan, then there can. Harden up the performance metrics that go with it, okay? And and that will be um something that will. Serve as a dashboard when you get your your nothing, your report, quarter reports, it comes in here and says. You know, how are we doing on each one of these goals? And I would say keep it simple. Is it, is it green? Go well, is it yellow? We can get some, some things worked through red. We're not making progress. We need to make some adjustments. So I think. I would want to see, and we've had it really helpful, just going back like. Fort Worth, Texas, Carrollton, Texas, and and Asheville, just having a quick way to say, are we making progress now? It it will be be valuable for you. And so that's, that's what I've got for you. Uh, and highly suggested, so I. Oh, I rewrite these up and have them ready for you. I presume that you adopted by resolution?
Twenty twenty-three strategic plan?
After you, for my part, I I real appreciate the opportunity to work with you. What I will do is take. The outcome. Of your adoption. And I I think we can do better than the the plan that you've got, even the plan you've got, it's got. Got some photographs and stuff in it. And I'll ask the staff, we've got two completed photographs we could put in for more immunity, you know what I mean? But um, but once you're adopted. I'll take it back to our marketing trucks and put it in a nice, nice format for you. And you can post it on on the web. But I I think I'm gonna be proud of of the product and I'm real impressed with the. The way that you all have approached this and brought the new members in and release. Like Sandy said, it's it's really wonderful. That you're not coming in here. I was, I was, I was pleased to see that it's new members uh largely share the same vision and are bringing. Uh, different insights to complement the the incumbent members of the board. So I'm I'm real hopeful for you all. And and please to have the opportunity to work with each of you.
Again, thank you for taking your time out for us. Really appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
Y'all want to keep moving? Y'all want to take a break?
Take the break after this.
So, right on two point three, which is the water and sewer rigs. Uh, Commissioner Hayley asked for a specific meeting to to bring back some options and waters and certain. So I've asked our finance director uh to work with me on some options. I will ask him to. Come up at this time to present that. So this is gonna range from. Uh, start, starting on page thirty, onward and packet through forty-two. Are you guys there?
He's pretty tired.
If I was just so small.
Would you have, will we put up on the screen?
Well, I can't see that. Just go here.
Alright, so the first page, it just shows summary of uh resident, how many accounts of what uh bill code they have. Residential inside, bulk inside, commercial inside, commercial outside, industrial inside, residential outside.
Residential inside, bulk, what?
Uh, bulk inside. Uh, it's the second line down on the number of accounts and their usages page. It's the first page.
And on thirty-four?
It's gotta be on thirty-three.
It's on thirty-two.
It's on thirty-four.
So the first one I see says residential, it says usage and it's got members. I see a name on the dock. No, we're gonna do it.
Maybe I can copy seven.
Yeah, it should be doing the, the item I sent you.
And this which you found on page thirty-seven?
Yeah.
You got supposed to be, thirty-seven is supposed to be on the first page?
Yeah. Second page.
What's the second page?
I've ordered a book and I'll just read out. Alright, so uh on page thirty-seven. It showed uh residential inside.
That's inside, you don't need to, inside town limits.
That's inside town limits. And there's uh twenty-three sixty-three that are on that uh bill code.
There's two thousand three hundred and sixty-three people.
I don't know how many people are in their homes, but that's.
So that's, that's households then.
And the next column is their total water and sewer usage. So if they had, if you had a bill that was one thousand gallons of usage, that's one thousand for water, one thousand for sewer, so that would be two thousand in that column. And then the final column is just putting it in the thousands. And then bulk inside. There's two. Uh, and they use one point eight million uh gallons of water. Commercial inside, there's three hundred and sixty-four. They use six point four million. Commercial outside, there's thirty-eight, they use six hundred thousand. Industrial inside, there's one, there's one, and it's a total of fifty-four million gallons. On usually. Uh, and residential outside, there's a thousand seventy and they use a total of four point seven. And below that is just the proportional share. At that. So there twenty-three sixty-three divided by thirty-eight thirty-eight is sixty-one point five seven.
Would you say again, twenty-sixty-three divided by what?
Thirty-eight thirty-eight, which is the total number of counts.
Where, where do you see the thirty-eight thirty-eight?
Uh, the line, the line and bowl below residential outside.
So, alright, that column comes down with that, alright. What is boat inside? What is that?
Uh, there's only two people on it and they're both Chatham County. It's the stuff we sell to Chatham County. Chatham County, it's a line Chatham County.
I thought we weren't selling them anymore water. That's what we told once before that we don't sell water to Chatham County.
We billed them one point eight billion gallons this month and it's been a similar amount the last while.
So we are selling to Chatham County.
Yeah. Uh, the next page should be thirty-four and. And thirty-four is just the breakdown of how many of those twenty-three sixty-three residential inside and what level of usage do they have? Uh, ten thousand plus, there's only three hu- uh, three hundred eighty-six people. About sixteen percent. And that thirty-eight percent used between five thousand and ten thousand, nineteen percent used between three thousand and five thousand. Eight percent used between two and three thousand, five and a half percent used between one and two. And about twelve percent used between zero and one thousand gallons. Uh, no, five to ten thousand would be the largest.
No, no, percentage wise. The two thousand is the biggest category percentage wise.
It's the final column. It's, it's how many people use two thousand plus is that first percentage column? So that's including people that use ten thousand because they, ten thousand. Ten thousand plus. Five thousand to ten thousand, three thousand to five thousand.
The third column is sixteen point three four percent. What is that?
That is how, what percentage of all the users use above ten thousand? So that's sixteen point three four. And then above five thousand would be five thousand to ten thousand and ten thousand plus, so that's.
So I'm trying to term of. Uh, people, what, what people it looks like is the thousand plus, eighty-eight percent.
So we need um.
No, because if you use ten thousand, that's a one thousand plus, but between one thousand and two thousand is only five point six seven pe- percent. Five to ten thousand, whereas the second, the second to last column is. Uh, everything above five thousand. It's just.
Five thousand what?
You, you, maybe I'm just stupid, but you're just not making sense to me.
Uh, this is a, this is a very true.
If you add sixteen thirty-four and thirty-eight uh sixty, it comes to that and their surrounding, that's why it's not to the exact. But this is how people. Yeah. That makes sense.
Well, so it's add on top of each other. The last column is, is the percentage of. Like households, there's a new sixteen and the percentage of households that would use five.
Okay, so, so there's the the majority of people.
Alright, and then below is just our water base for our several. Uh, different bill codes. And then the next page should be Pittsburgh and that along page image. Forty, and that just shows Pittsburgh, what Pittsburgh's rate is.
For our base. And for background concern for our base in. In town is for uh waters twenty-seven and the sewer is nineteen. And for allies double.
Yeah.
And then after the base for each thousand. Is that a point five, point five zero? I can't.
It's five point five. Every thousand gallons of water is five dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. And so. That is the case to me that there's more. I thought the first thousand was free.
That's what we're doing, that.
That's why, that's why we're looking at this to see if there's some relief we can give to the. On these water bills because they're getting nothing free.
So some, uh, the gas turn on the water runs and it starts to calculate.
So if they don't turn the water on. Period or do anything, sixty-seven dollars, ninety cents.
What is um, on forty, what's, you said? The usage rate per thousand. For Pittsburgh, what's their base?
So their base is uh for in-town, it's twenty-two forty. If you have a meter that's greater than or, I'm sorry, less than or equal to one inch. And if you have a meter uh size that's greater than one inch, it's forty-one fif- uh fifteen. And then they do their uh usage rate a little bit different than we do. Theirs is zero to two, the first two thousand gallons are billed at eight twenty-nine. The next four thousand are billed at nine sixty-nine and six thousand plus will be had billed at eleven fifty-three. And their bulk water is about four times as much as ours at sixteen fifty-seven.
What is that for you, John?
Uh, it's, it's people that don't have a. It's people that don't have a a residential account mainly and it's. Not quite industrial, it's just they're only buying water, they're not buying any sewer. And they're in both of them by Chaff County. And you notice uh our bulk water we call it four fifty. This is the only time I've ever seen it be lower than what the residential in uh in-town is.
How many customers do we have in the bulk water rate?
It's both Chatham County, there are two.
So Pittsburgh, who's their for for user?
I don't, I don't know. But they might have something like the fire department where you can go in there and. Uh, if you exit a lot of car or something, you have a uh water tank, you can fill it up there. Like, that's common use for it. It's. That's typically how it's done, but. Uh, no, those would have moved. If you had a residential. Uh, the next page will be thirty-six and it's just the same thing as the last two, but this is what Sanford breaks on. One thing to pay attention to is they do it by each, uh, page thirty-six of fifty-two. And uh, this is the same as the last two. This is just for Sanford. One thing to keep in mind is they do their bills by uh CCFs. Which equates to seven hundred and forty-eight gallons.
So seven thousand, seven forty-eight?
And in that second column, I have a control for what would be a thousand.
So what's a three CCF versus an eight CCF for?
Uh, three CCFs is twenty-two.
It says three times.
Uh, three times seven forty-eight.
Okay.
Which is twenty-two forty-four.
What's a three dash eight CCF?
Uh, so all the C, the five CCFs between three and eight. So your first three are billed at uh varying allowance if you're in Sanford. Uh, the next five are billed at six twenty-five and anything above eight is billed at four oh seven. And the way that equates to what's, what is that in a thousand gallons is off of the. Alright, and then. Uh, for Sanford, yes. And then they also have an industrial rate like we do and uh in order to qualify, you would need to use thirty, uh, one million gallon a day.
Where's the industrial rate on the, on the?
Uh, on thirty-six, it's this. Uh, it's in the bottom third of the page. I'm sorry, bottom third of the text. It's two point two five per thousand gallons per water and four dollars per gallon first uh for. Or per thousand for sewer. And they don't have a base rate and it's significantly lower than.
You don't have any base rate?
No, I I was as surprised as you, but that's. For, for their industrial, for their, for their uh residential inside. It's uh twenty sixty-four with a three uh CCF allowance and double that for outside. And their sewer is nineteen fifty-three and.
So they give up to twenty-one hundred gallons free? Can you say with a three CCF?
Up to twenty-two forty-four gallons, yes.
Right. Twenty-two forty-four free.
Yeah.
And your base rate is low.
Correct. Uh, and if you go to page forty, the next, uh, one should be page forty-one of fifty-two, and that's just showing. Uh, this is what Southern City, if you have thousand gallons, five thousand gallons or ten thousand gallons, what would charge for Southern City, Pittsburgh, and Sanford?
And so that's, that's an addition base rate, correct?
Uh, yes, the thousand would be, if you used a thousand gallons, what would your bill be?
You pay fifty-nine plus is sixty-three, correct?
Uh, if you live in Southern City without, this is not including garbage, it would be fifty-nine seventy-five. For in-town, oh, uh, one nineteen fifty for residential out of town, seventy-five.
That can't be right, what you said just can't be right. Because you just said if you use a thousand gallons, you pay fifty-nine seventy-five, but our base rate is more than that.
Our base rate for.
So my question is, is it the fifty-nine seventy-five plus the base rate?
No, the base rate is twenty-seven for water plus five fifty, so your, your water charges would be thirty-two fifty. And then sewer will be nineteen twenty-five plus eight dollars, which would be twenty-seven twenty-five. So twenty-seven twenty-five plus thirty-two fifty.
I'll see the twenty-seven twenty-five on the chart.
You're up. Alright, so you go back to page thirty-four.
I'm talking about forty-one, what, what is forty-one supposed to represent? You said this is what?
If you use one thousand gallons, this is what you would be charged.
No, that's not accurate. And I tell you why it's not accurate, because if you're using a thousand gallons of water, you use, I want you to think like a citizen, if you use a thousand gallons of water, you also use sewer. So, i- i- if we go, you don't want to show me that, I'm gonna tell you why it's not accurate. If you say to a citizen, use a thousand dollars of water, here's your bill for fifty-nine seventy-five, they would be jumping up and down, because that is not the bill they're holding in their hand.
It does not include garbage.
No, it doesn't include sewer either. Okay, because there is none way. Because our base rate according to you is twenty-seven plus nineteen, and then you get, and then you get, I mean, it's sixty-three dollars. Roughly, and garbage is like, what, five bucks or something? Twenty?
Twenty.
So if I put on citizen, oh, your thousands of hours, getting bills fifty-seven bucks, they take that all down low. But it's not. If I, if I have an average bill that we want to handle for a thousand, I guarantee you that citizens pay more than fifty-nine seventy-five.
Sure do.
Uh, so. What, what is the bill, the total bills, for, for a citizen with a thousand gallons?
Twenty-seven for the water availability fee, five fifty for their first thousand gallons, so that's thirty-two fifty right there.
That's just on the water?
Yes, and then sewer is nineteen twenty-five plus eight.
And you have the, you have the, the twenty, I want you to think like a citizen thinks, they will make it that.
Oh, oh, the nineteen thirty-six for, for garbage.
So when you.
Which that's cheap, I mean, we're not complaining about that.
If you're having, you're having to think like the citizens always.
We're just trying to show, uh, this is how much we charge for water and sewer versus Pittsburgh versus Denver, just because we're specifically looking at water, water and sewer rates. That's why I did not include, I did not mean to make it, make it out to be cheap, I just, we're not discussing garbage, that's why I didn't include.
I think we just need to start from the beginning and decide if we want to have a base rate, does it include a thousand gallons or zero gallons like names? Um, because that's basically where the cost is, is the water and the sewer, and the base rate.
So is there anything in here where, was, what we're hoping for in our?
I'm, I'm, the next couple of things, um. In order to add the eight thousand gallon allowance, we have to keep it revenue neutral, because we're on the the trust unit list. And we just got seventy-five million dollars, that, it would be such a faux pas to say, we're going to lower our rates, even though. We've clearly need, we need the money to do the construction, so it needs to be revenue neutral, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. Going for it, I'm just trying to set the standard of, just so everyone's aware of, this is how much these things.
What were we doing before last year when you, when the fee schedule passed, do you remember? I don't remember.
Uh, so if you go to page four, uh. If you go to the page label, cost of a thousand gallon allowance for residential inside.
Wait, please, sir.
Uh, thirty-five.
Things in all.
Awesome.
So that just shows, alright, five fifty for water, eight dollars for sewer, that's thirteen fifty. Uh, the total number of residential inside accounts we have is twenty-three sixty-three. Though, and twenty-eight of those use at least one thousand gallons. The remaining accounts use on average between the four, the, between the one hundred and forty-four gallons, so that means if we gave a one thousand gallon allowance. We would have to write off two point one million gallons of water and sewer.
So technically, I can get that calculations.
Uh, so I just, I think this is just the. So we're at that number?
Yeah.
Uh, so this is from that, for, uh, that original page.
What is from that original?
Twenty-three sixty-three.
Yes.
And so the one thousand plus, this is everyone that uses one thousand, don't matter if you use one thousand one or nine thousand. Yeah.
So two thousand eighty, two thousand eighty residents.
Who's at least one thousand gallons.
Right.
Which is eighty-eight percent of the.
Okay, so if you go, a thousand five is not a lot.
The people in that are between zero and one, which is about twelve, eleven point nine eight, if you average out their bills, it's, they use one hundred and forty-four gallons, does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're adding, you're taking that, that, most probably to get to here, but where's the one forty-four coming in?
The one forty-four comes in at one forty-four times, uh. Uh, what is that, two hundred and eighty-three?
Two hundred and eighty-three?
Uh, twenty-three sixty-three minus twenty-eighty times one forty-four.
Sixty-three minus one eighty?
Twenty-three sixty-three minus twenty-eighty times one forty-four.
One forty-four is, no, that's counts that.
That is the average usage of the accounts that do, that are active, but do not quite yet hit one thousand gallons.
Not two, minus two zero eight zero. And multiply that by one forty-four. That's how you're giving this figure here.
Uh, if you give, I can't read you right, but, but yes, it's, it's just twenty-three sixty-three minus twenty-eighty times one forty-four.
Okay, now it gives the thirty thousand.
Yeah. So that means, we know twenty, two thousand eighty times a thousand is obviously two point zero eight mil.
And so this is annual?
This is monthly. So that would cost the town, that, that first pilot to figure that, twenty-eight six thirty, so that means. Where is that other, where are they going to generate twenty-third, twenty thousand to be revenue neutral?
To, because of interest for us to balance and account for.
Yes, yes, for, for a variety of reasons that have to be, uh, revenue neutral. And so. There's a couple of options, uh, you can do, so currently our liquid fee is twenty-five dollars, that is very low, and that's if you don't pay your bill by the fifth of the next month. Um, if you raise it from twenty-five to fifty, that was, and this is on page forty-two, if you raise it from twenty-five to fifty. That would generate an additional four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. If you change the late fee from five dollars to the greater of five dollars or five percent of the current balance. That would generate about twenty-two fifty a month. So until that would generate about sixty-six hundred more per month, so that means that we only need to get twenty-two thousand to.
Hold on. Changing from five to, the next line is twenty-two five balances one twenty-seven. Are you getting down to sixty-six twenty-two?
Okay, so, so the bounce on two fifteen, the outstanding bounce was one twenty-seven, five forty-two.
Of all our citizens.
Yeah, and that was, uh, and what we did do was, that was eight hundred and twenty-six people, we charged them all five dollars, because that's the agreement.
Okay.
But if we were to instead do greater of five dollars. Yeah.
Okay, so you gained about two thousand.
Yeah, per month, which. Makes it a little bit easier, so we still have to come up with another twenty-two thousand of how you want to do that. And you can do that in a variety of ways, you can increase the bulk water rate. Uh, commercial inside, commercial outside, industrial rate, or residential out of town. And that is entirely up to you of how you wanna handle.
So, out, out of town already pays.
They already pay a hundred percent, you're right.
I didn't charge someone fifty dollars for a lazy on a water bill.
Uh, that's just, that's all, that's after, uh, that's the delivery fee, that means we have to go out there, send a guy out there with a truck. And drive out there, turn their water back on, and then when they finally pay, turn it back on, so there is a reconnection dollar cost in that.
So it's a reconnection fee as well.
And it's currently twenty-five dollars. It's currently twenty-five dollars, which is very low for most places.
That's just the living fee, there, there's there not a reconnection fee?
Uh, there is no reconnection fee, because you don't, you, you, you never, no one never calls it a reconnection fee, because if you happen to not reconnect it and you charge them. It becomes a whole issue, so everywhere called it be going.
Some be called a non-payment fee. And some people may have to pay it, but they may not have to, kind of win the meter, then the staff gets out there to cut somebody off, so you could be discriminated if you call it reconnection.
What's the likelihood that Chatham County will have other sources for water, the one point eight million that they use monthly, is that right?
Yeah, that was, that was what we built for February one.
What are the likelihood, what's likely that they may go elsewhere to get this water, if we up their rate? What's the unintended consequence, do they have other sources, is there?
Do you have a contract with them, that's the rate, also that's.
There was one, there is one.
I thought, I thought we're contractual.
Like ten years ago.
Is that expired? Was it perpetual?
Dig it out, I'm sure I have it, but.
Because that seems way too.
The one being that we buy from them, I like them to have a, a contract from them buying from us.
What'd you say?
I think the contract that we have with them is just the contract from us buying with them, that's reserved a million gallons for us, we don't have a contract from us selling to them.
Okay.
Oh, but how we selling the water, what we actually need is.
Well, this is water only.
Yeah, but I'm still, I'm still saying we still have the water, it's just why are we selling water?
We're not in a water war for it.
You know, I see it, uh, I mean, yeah, but, uh, as Alan said, it's pennies on the dollar. Of what they're getting for what we're selling.
How, how much do we, are we making on like a basis, so I'm, or is it just very much the month?
Uh, it varied by usage.
We're making about eight thousand, eight thousand a month, or no, sorry, it's eighty-one hundred, I believe, yeah. That's not right. It's about five grand. Okay, so you can turn that into twenty, if you made it more competitive with.
It's, it's, yeah, and, and, uh, Sanford, four fifty is extremely low comparatively.
Do you think this, the, the usage drop, and that's not the same, or, or I think of us?
Is that what? There's a chance of, if you raise water rates, a part of people's usage has gone lower, because they're gonna be more, um. They're gonna look at it more and try and be more efficient with their usage, but.
So basically.
You're, it's gonna have to be done in a variety.
If, if we want to keep the customer, the ten minutes break, we gotta find twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, basically, there's, it's, it's a zero-sum game, if you give resident, in-town residents a break, someone else is not going to get it, and someone else is going to pay that difference.
And do you think that that's like inelastic, with the, the pricing that the, the county is, is purchasing water from us?
Do I think, what about it?
Do you think it's inel, do you think it's inelastic, like, you, you think they'll respond to a price change by buying less?
I wouldn't think so.
You would not?
I would not think they would change their behavior. And you can put it for a dollar a gallon, yeah, I mean, things would change obviously.
Of course extreme, but I was thinking more along lines of what, uh, are you, cities are gonna drive.
So what we did before to speed schedule was that, because I know, and as an average, if you went out top, we just, and I said it could. I mean, we're not strong up twenty dollars.
We just.
Before we did before that, we, we weren't, seems like everything was working out fine before that, so let's go with what we did before. We implemented a new schedule and see what the differences. Because we had a many.
Uh, I, I know from memory, it truly, the last several years, we need to change anything, and they did not.
I like to see it in front of me, please make it bigger than what you. Because I wanna, because before, I mean, there was never, didn't seem to, we didn't seem to have the issues that we're having now. What you're told.
Sixteen fifty-seven. Sixteen fifty-seven.
Five thousand gallons, eighty-two seventy-five. And if you go back and compare that to the national rate of inflation, between the time it went seventy-five to eighty-two, seventy-five, sixty-seven years ago. It pretty well lasted, it, with, the, the national.
Well, that's only because, and that, the average from states off the line, it's just like, it's three dollars and second box, that's the average.
And is that, is that, uh, given cities like Durham, Raleigh, and Charlotte, on a much bigger share, are they doing it by population, like by number of town where I'm?
I can just plug in the, the state average. You, like, that's right, Durham, Raleigh.
They're absolutely cheap, and, and if you go by number of accounts, larger cities are going to be far away than that, that whole.
So.
Fifteen million.
We went, what was the percentage that we increased our prior water base, what percentage was?
About twenty, if you're using five thousand gallons, about twenty-two to twenty-three percent. And so there are about, it might be twenty-four, but.
Yeah, inflation was about twenty-eight percent during that period of time we didn't raise rates. That's, that's the challenge, it's from twenty sixteen, town should have been raising base three percent a year. And you tried to, and we had, but you made up for seven years at one time. And because we weren't charging the rate, there were important projects like replacing water lines throughout town that just weren't getting done, because the revenue wasn't coming in to do it.
It exacerbated the problem.
Yeah, Eric has crunched some numbers, and I understand the, the problem with not raising, and we should have, but. I think Eric is estimating that if we max Pittsburgh, we'll get about fifteen thousand more on the bulk, is what you're thinking?
Yeah, like, I mean, you, you estimated twenty thousand from the, yeah, per month.
Hey.
You said we're billing for one point, like, per month.
Uh, that was the most recent month, it fluctuated between like one point three, one point eight, it's, it's within.
You got it, it's, it's like a one point five average.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably fair to say.
So if we, if we can get fifteen from bulk, and we get roughly six. From raising the rate thing. Yeah, we're twenty-one.
So you need another seven.
Right, but, so what if instead of going with a thousand, we went five hundred, I mean, just to have, help them with.
You go whatever you, yeah, but.
What's the calculation, what's the figure?
It would just be one half, if you did five hundred, it would be, it would be, it would be just about one half, it would change a little bit, because some of those people that are between zero and one hundred, one thousand would change. But it's, it's half.
So twenty-eight, if we went up seven fifty, it'd be, uh, twenty-eight times point seven five would?
Yeah, so it'll be twenty-one.
What is this, what is this, it's cow here. What is the status of the new meters?
Those big board in the next few weeks. I mean, it's.
Look on those meters.
I believe it's South three, three, well, it was about three.
It was what?
Million.
Well, we didn't pay, so that was super.
Yeah, but that's my point, this is turning over to Sanford, why?
Sanford's gonna get tracks, so Sanford's going to get the, the net asset value of what we have, and so if we have those meters a year and a ten-year replacement schedule. And we paid three million for them, they're gonna credit it at two point seven, so I mean, yeah, so, they're just going to have a new figure of, alright, here, right, here's how the Southern City gave us some money. And that's, that's how they'll do the calculation for the rates for Southern City residents.
Well, the discussion with the board is being, even if it, and if I, if I get this wrong, you'll shut me up, but. Even if it's temporary, we.
Yeah.
We'd like to do something, so. If we popped it seven hundred gallons, we should, assuming we can get the bulk. We should, um, break, break even and balance. But I'm thinking, I mean, should we increase the bulk and see how that goes, and then?
And then we're gonna do both at the same time, I mean, you know.
What if we're not balancing? Not balancing.
We have to, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it for the summer fact. The citizens are suffering badly right now. I I mean, really. And we have some seniors that are literally keeping their head above water. And the best that we can do for them, I would just have to find a plenty somewhere else. I mean. That I realize, but we have to do something and it has to be done fairly quickly. We have some unknowns.
Yeah.
Here and we're just gonna have to make a decision and live with it.
I think the five hundred is safe.
And we're doing five hundred plus the.
We go up on the late fee, we go up on the bulk.
And we go on above that should get us in the ballpark we need and it should give the citizens some relief. I I I'm not, I'm not darting here about water bills. It's the fact that I know we need to do something. And he, you know, and that's what we are like and we we have to do something to help them. They put us here and they're asking for it.
So worst case, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Worst case scenario, if for some reason we don't, I guess it would be the bulk if we don't get the bulk.
So we're not, we're gonna buy another ounce from you.
So what happens if we. Means it was seventy-five hundred and we increase it, and so we have to be at fourteen thousand.
If if you increase it to seven fifty, it would have to be about twenty-one thousand.
Right, but if we did five, we're fourteen-three, we're only gonna get sixty-six from the increase in the late fee. We never get that. So that's gonna put us in about eight. So let's say worst case scenario, uh, you know, like Travis says, they say we're not buying anymore. And so in that month, we're short eight thousand. What's the ramification? What are all the ramifications of that?
If we're short eight thousand in a month, I mean, it's not the end of the world. We will have to revisit this though to come up with another solution.
Okay, what's DQ gonna say?
I don't have a favorable on us at all that we're, that we just received almost a hundred million dollars in grants because. We needed help paying for our water and sewer infrastructure.
That we increased other things to offset that?
That that's what I, that's what I'm hoping and I can't imagine that would look good.
Well, we're we're not taking anything away. We're just juggling.
It should be, which to me, that would be acceptable, but I I'm not, I don't work for DQ. I don't.
So that's a lot of that we're playing with, yeah.
It can't look, it can't look good.
But it can't look hard. I mean, it can't look all that bad because they're still getting the same.
The same, we're getting the same amount and what that's. I looked for it, but it that's it it, I, that's it looks neutral. Yeah, let's go down.
Sorry guys.
So how, so if people are struggling to pay their water bills and they're paying them late. And then we increase the late fees, is that gonna make it more difficult for businesses, like some people to pay their water bills?
It is, but I don't know unless we find the money. Once we don't do a late fee, we couldn't even fund then from, and we increase the bulk. But I mean, you know, we're doing an increase at two fifty. I mean, we're almost down to zero then.
Well, even just if you give them five, you're only reducing their bill by six dollars and seventy-five cents. Which I know that's six dollars and seventy-five cents, but.
John, why? On page forty-one for bulk water for Southern City, there's three different rates.
I thought, is it just. Forty-one uh, for bulk water, if you bought a thousand gallons of bulk water, five thousand gallons of bulk water, or ten thousand gallons of bulk water.
So the rate does change.
No, the total price changes. The rate always changes, the total price changes.
I understand. Okay.
Okay.
Nate, when did you say the meters will be gone?
They're like a middle of March.
I'm sorry.
I mean, we said the word control. We're not the ones that's calling, so it's just.
When do you think we will start getting those numbers?
When we get the nu- I'm sorry, the like numbers from the readings of the meters? I can't answer that. I mean, you hope once they're installed.
Again, when they're installed.
That's true.
Cause then people's bills are going on, but it'll reflect usage.
Yeah, how they're actually true use, but.
So some people may say no change. Some people may say a significant change. It's just gonna depend on the.
I mean, if it's reading fifty percent.
Oh, it's gonna be, I know it's that way, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be eighty-eight percent.
That's right.
They read lower as they get older?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's the problem.
That's why you need to spend as far as.
Be sixty percent after.
Lucky you. Well, change, change this first.
How do you monitor it? Uh, there's, they're they're done through wifi, so they, it's me as a town monitor it. Uh, so there's, they hooked up like telephone poles that encapsulate the readings. So at my desk, I can log in and. Get exactly how much you you used every single hour for the last hour, many days.
Have you seen this? Any change since the new meter?
How many, how many units are getting replaced?
All of them essential meters.
Every single one of them? How long with that whole project?
When they get out of here, maybe a few days. And that's why it's so much labor to get it started because the work is really getting the the poles and the satellite infrastructure in place.
Yeah.
And and getting, making sure they went around and looked at all the different boxes, the meters and see if any of those need to be replaced. Put the new meters in and that works all been done. So just actually deploying and installing the new meter can be done. Like in a week. It's just whenever they can come here to do it. We have the meters.
This is like a third, excuse me, this is like a third party installing meters. Okay.
Yeah.
They're coming in with like a team.
So have meat, have meters, some meters already been installed?
A a few meters have been installed just for testing purposes. Systems working.
So if we. If we, if we took this to increase in bulk rate, get the meters in, look at our increase in revenue. Could we, what will happen if, you know, obviously we're to the good with extra revenue, what will happen with that extra money? What will the guy, what fund will it sit in?
It will, it will sit at thirty. It doesn't transfer to ten.
Like do you put it in the capital approval form for the enterprise fund or does it just?
I was right now, I mean, anything within reason.
Cause I'm wondering if, if at that point we could. Do any more.
I mean, I mean.
Yeah, refund program.
I will say that it was in the original budget, it was anticipated that these new meters would have been installed earlier in the year, so.
They refund based on percentage usage and you know what it is? It looks good with DQ, we never extend, and we still get them, get them removed based on percentage usage.
Uh, so you're saying, let's let's say, let's say. Let's say we budgeted a hundred dollars in revenue and a hundred dollars in expenses. And you're saying, let's say we got to a hundred and ten dollars in revenue and kept steady at a hundred dollars in expenses. Use that ten dollars and rebate it at two residential in town at the end of the year.
And I don't want to cheat, I don't think it'd be a flat, so you can do it on, you know, on a periodic basis based on usage.
I think DQ's gonna lose their mind if they see you doing a rebate program. I I I'm just saying that just for one.
And that is kind of sort of what we're trying to do. And I, I, you know, you're giving money back after they've given us money rather than transferring responsibility. Our rates from bulk to late fees to make up the difference that we're trying to give the citizens. I think we're a little more favorable from their standpoint. And I think it's a doable solution.
Well, I was just anticipating part of our monies would be from increasing the bulk.
Yeah. That's what we said, increase the ball. Uh, the first, uh, I thought you said seven hundred and fifty gallons free and increasing the late fee.
Yeah, that's gonna be real close though.
Those were.
Seven fifty would be twenty-one. I think I think what you suggested would get about fourteen, which would be a five hundred gallons.
And how much did you calculate the thousand? So you're six dollar draw.
But what we are.
First dollars.
Well, yeah, well, that's.
If they use more than five hundred, they use more than five hundred gallons.
They use more than five hundred.
If they didn't use anything at all, does not.
They put five hundred and that means that the first hundred of their bill would have dropped six dollars and seventy-five cents. So if they only use uh, five hundred gallons, then this sixty-seven whatever subtract six dollars, seventy-five cents is the bill. But most people use, like our household uses three thousand. The subs, that's right. At least they know we're trying to be something to help them. And you know, and hopefully they'll understand that at a certain point, our hands are tied.
We can always revisit later once revenues start going up.
Yeah, Chatham County severely drops next month, like we're, I'm going to push to revisit this.
Okay. Heard everything and so.
Chris has a question.
That's okay. Is there any kind of organization, have people that need?
Churches.
There's a few churches that do. I reached out to DSS already to see, hey, is there a program that you're currently offering? That I can get forms in the office to show people how to do it and invite them when we're, when we're not quite as busy on cutoff day and late day. Unfortunately, the LEWAP program was the most recent one and that has ran out of funding.
I remember, I remember one time Chatham County had some kind of program.
I just, I had a client recently who had a, 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 a very high utility bill. Um, and the process for requesting assistance was tedious. I mean, I had to go to probably seven or eight different agencies or organizations. Um, and the ones that typically help are all out of funding at this point in the fiscal year.
So Chatham County doesn't do that anymore?
I have some churches, couple nonprofits.
That's not the one-time thing, right? I mean, it's sure.
It usually is one time, a one-time thing.
Yeah, we do too.
Like, not just once a year, but.
I know this is a different issue, but how has Sanford gotten to the point where they're able to manage it? So that they don't have a base fee in there, fees are looked pretty reasonable. I mean, how do they get to that fiscal point?
Well, the same reason that Pittsburgh is higher. I mean, it's a larger system. They have more economies of scale to spread the costs of. Small system like ours is just gonna have a higher.
It just comes with population, that's fine.
We can do something too.
Yeah, so again, what is the pleasure of the board on this matter? Uh, we've heard all the pluses and minuses, the good and the bad and the ugly. So we need to make a decision on what are we going to do tonight to help alleviate this issue with our citizens, so. Guys have the floor.
Well, let's do what Louis said, five hundred and what Alex said with the bulk needs or whatever.
From seven fifty to.
Matching Pittsburgh.
Matching Pittsburgh.
And what what do you mean to do with the late fee? That was part of the discussion.
How much did you wanna go up?
Uh, the recommendation, the recommendation package was. Five dollars or five percent of current balance. Four percent of current balance, whichever is greater. So that would raise us, that would, that would give us an additional sixty-six twenty-two. Plus Alex idea of the, of the increase in the bulk recovered the five hundred in balances.
We need to do something. We need to do it tonight. We can talk about it, talk about it, talk about it. It won't get around. Let's do something.
But he wants a motion.
Wait, why does someone make a motion?
I don't know how to make it. I don't know how to say all that. I'll second.
But the motion, we give an allowance to the. Uh, residential inside customers of five hundred gallons free. Coupled with an increase in the late fee to. Five dollars or five percent of the current balance, whichever is greater and also coupled with. The bulk rate increase from two fifty to sixteen fifty seven.
Nine seven, yeah.
What?
A motion. And it's been probably second. Any questions? All in favor, vote by sign of by. All votes have the same right. Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
And just to know, uh, just so you're aware, I'm just gonna contact the LSC and NCDQ tomorrow to make sure that there's not gonna be. No, I'm gonna keep to myself.
I'm basically, I think you explained that there's no.
Yeah, it's it's.
Should we, should we, should we subject to that response?
We're real bad, yeah.
Yeah, oh, we know when it's affected, like I say.
Once these new meters are installed, we may be rebuked where.
Sure.
I mean, I don't know, but I know it's gonna be real.
We can look at this. This is the media.
Sanford's.
Well, I mean, the thing of a news, it's a battery, you know, here every two hundred years, you got. We don't know that. Yeah, these little wireless meters that, this is kind of like, uh, nobody has to. It's like if he goes to the bank and you also.
This is such, this is so old. They're exposed to a certain. I mean, we're, so they're not asking. On the first page. This, this appears to be a little. But I still like to. What's the leader of your races?
I'm, I can try to take eight grand.
This is.
No, 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 forty seven fifty two.
We're doing a. You guys, so on the second was round. Would you guys talking about the.
So we were talking, since we just got a nice one retired. We just tabled this.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
For personal conversation. Since we just got this information tonight, it's, uh, talked to several members of the board. We would like to, uh, take this information home and look at it and study it and revisit it again at another meeting. So I'd like to make a motion that we. Um, revisit the personnel discussion for the this year twenty four twenty five budget. To the next budget meeting.
They're moving, I would say, all in favor of sort my sign of buy. Those have say, right? So we need to say that.
Did we set those already?
No, no.
We only set February.
Needs to be at least a couple weeks out.
Why?
So it's, we had time to get stuff together. You got anything to hold out?
We don't need to worry in this budget.
Yes, sir.
I said this.
Right.
So everybody should have been ready.
That's not to tell. That's right.
Yeah, they should have.
It's not about being ready.
I'm not gonna argue the point, but we started this on Monday night. Everybody knew when we were gonna start. That's all I got to say about it. Go ahead, um, Mayor Porter.
Um, so we have a meeting on the first. What about the eleventh? That's Monday.
Can't do the eleven. What about Monday's better session?
Seven. I mean, I'm still putting this out there. I don't know about me. But I'm dog tired at the end of the workday. I'm earballed and cranky and I'm much more liable to bite your head off. Sorry, John.
Well, I've discussed this with a couple and, uh, some of them have work schedule, work conflicts on Saturday. Uh, through the month of, of March, and the longer we take this.
I can make sense, I can make sense. To answer Cindy's questions, I'm, I'm free, so.
March seventh.
It's a week from today.
Yes.
March seventh.
Yes.
Yeah.
About thirty or six o'clock.
It's two six.
Well, the request because, you know, you know what we, what I was needing.
So what else can we accomplish on the seventh besides? President over there, as well as can we get on there? Cause we'd like to see, I can't speak for everybody, but I'd like to see a more, a fuller picture. Of what, uh, expected expenses and revenues are gonna be. Cause even this, and this is a lot of info. But this is a little part of our budget.
We're very early in the budget process and calendar, right? And you're, at this point in time, there's a lot of things we don't know. Cause we don't have hard numbers on revenues for factors that. You know, information you have to give from the state, they'll make. Estimates on where we are. You know, we've got a Brady person in Budge, that's just come on board today. I'd like to be able to sit down with all the department heads. One on one and be able to go through the things we talked about tonight, which is a plan, to do what Ms. Bray's asked for, when she's saying what are their top three priorities? And be able to compile all that unless, unless the board actually say, say direction and say, you just want this segment. But if you want all of it, compile.
We can start this, but. I can tell you why I'm feeling anxiety and maybe why Commissioner Bray feels it. Us being here this long, we're. We're. Two months in, getting ready to be three months in. And except for last year when we had a town manager move us in March. And we were in the rush. We were doing, we were much further along at this point. We would have. Four meetings a month. And so we would have already had two budget meetings. And we were going to have presentations about department heads. And we've already had a preliminary packet. Um, it wasn't the budget per se, cause that never got approved till June, but we'd already have a preliminary packet. So. For me personally, I don't have that by this point. I feel some angst and anxiety, cause that's what I'm used to having. It's like, it's like the security, it's like line is a security blanket. So I'm feeling insecure, cause I don't have those figures. But that's just kinda. Well, I'm feeling this way.
And I remember it being said by the town managers, we don't have. The figures on the revenue yet, but we're gonna use the projected. Figures and, and start putting this thing together until we have the real numbers. So that we could go through and see what's good, what's needed, what's.
So it just felt like last year, we were, we threw no thought to. Of Hanks or, or anybody else's, but. We weren't leaving in March. I felt extremely rushed last year. I felt like our budget season was essentially shorted by three months. So I just don't feel rushed again this year. So that's, that's kinda my internal anxiety. Maybe I just need to go to the council, I don't know.
We had more information by this time.
I didn't see if we could have something, some numbers, something to look at, something to start with to work with. Some idea of where we're going.
The, the Saturday meetings that were had previously was department heads presenting their budget requests.
Right.
We have that. But we're trying to go to a higher level, what we're doing in our budget process and helping stream that before you, that comes to you. So we are further along in the process. That's right. But, but it's not helpful, I don't believe it's helpful to you or the staff to have a presentation all day long on a Saturday. But ninety percent of what's presented, we don't have funding.
Okay.
And I'm trying to make sure that you have something that aligns with your strategic plan, so that you have something, you have that's. In a much better condition to be able to make decisions.
I, I appreciate that, I understand, but I, I want you to know. Why we feel certain ways and why you're certain anxiety.
That's why I asked for the top three things for a person, so we wouldn't have to sit there and go through ten things, cause we know we can't afford ten of those things. We may not be able to afford, but one, that's why we asked for the top three.
I appreciate that perspective, but I, I think it's important that you also have appreciation of our perspective.
Okay, that, that sounds like we're going back to department presentations, if I'm hearing that.
Just have some information and. Room tops, I mean, a memo could be sufficient. Something. I mean, I'm not saying go backwards, but definitely want, uh. I, I like to, I like to, to take the information and digest it. But like, uh. Having to decide it night of.
I understand. We're talking about materials in advance for a meeting that's on the set. Then that's at least materials distributed no later than even on the fifth. That means I have.
I'm talking, I'm talking to say about the fifth, but I'm just talking in general.
Yeah.
Now, I understand the fifth is a week away, so maybe we get some stuff night of. Maybe we, we, we get to parle in general, like, we, we'll have a whole week to read this, so that's, you know, that's plenty of time. Maybe some new stuff comes on, but then at least we have more stuff.
Cause we wanna make these decisions like incrementally though, how long would it take to get projected revenues for the town for the next budget? You just do all this stuff simultaneously?
You kinda back into it. I mean, generally, it makes sense to do your strategic plan, then talk about personnel. Then you can start looking at some revenues and departmental expenditures, knowing that you're kind of in a negotiated process. Then you kinda back into revenues again, because normally around May, when you really start getting locked in numbers on revenue.
You say talk about personnel, do you talk, are you talking about giving them raises about us?
I'm talking about this in the packet here tonight.
Okay, but that, that, we're not taking into account any revenues that we're bringing in, so how are we gonna purchase situation not knowing, bringing in?
Be- because you're, you're, you're talking about in the stages with the information you know at that time. And personnel is something that we know we can make projections about, but we know what those figures call. So we know what cost living is usually be. We know what, uh, we, we know with certainty about what health insurance is falling at, those sorts of things.
Make projections.
And whether expenses, though, I think your question was, what about the revenue projections?
Yeah, I just, my understanding is why can't it be done at the same time, but it's, is, do we come into agreement with these? These salaries, is that like a preliminary? It's not, it's always preliminary.
You drop the budget all at one time.
Okay, so.
How do you really have money? You, well. It, that's part of the process in these discussions is, you're, you're talking about, you know, it's all in the assumption you have the money. That you're trying to talk about what we're prioritizing, and that's why it goes to the strategic plan exercise. As you're going through the plan sheet, we're gonna identify things, know the board doesn't wanna fund this, we scratched that off. We have more information and we can start tagging in more expenditures and, and revenues as it's known. It's, it's one of those things, you're kind of saying, we're leaning towards doing this, let's put a pin in it and move on to the next topic. That's just the way the budget process works. I mean, cause you can't wait till, you can't wait to start the budget till you have all the information.
That's what we've been saying all along. We've been saying that's the very thing that we said from the very beginning. But we're, we're just projections.
But we're a few months from that. I'm talking about like now, we're giving you the information we have. I'm gonna sit down with the department heads and, and refine their budget. That's what I meant, that's, that's the process.
So we could potentially run it on something that we agree upon here.
We're not gonna ground anything until we know what we got.
But, but I mean, we could go back on. Cause that is, it's not fun. We can be like, oh, sorry, we can't do that, you know, we don't have it in.
But the difference is we've had a chance to sit around and talk about it, so there's an understanding of what's being proposed. And it's easy to say, here's the revenue we're plugging in, are we still in agreement on what we decided on personnel? And then you can move on. That's a five to ten minute conversation versus a two hour conversation, cause it's only been presented.
The way about prioritizing the department set really. Okay, the way about prioritizing the department set really, uh, such as speedy. That need officers need this, need that. And. There's some areas that don't have that need. Don't have the personnel need, don't have the necessary, uh, salary increase at this time. Uh. Why not prioritize our basic needs of the, of most. That was needed most, that's what I'm trying to say.